And welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. We have good attendance, Bill Ames, who is here by way of conference call. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, we'll begin our meeting as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Now please rise for the pledge to the flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to justice.
Well, I was just going to announce that the first speaker this morning will be David Weisneck, but he took the liberty, so good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Weisneck, Fort Innian Gap, giving you your back for the gap update. As of the end of this month, 31st of October, current personnel who trained on Fort Innian Gap, thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one, so we're off to a busy year again. Sally, you will, and our neighbors, place into the gap, we will continue shooting field artillery through this weekend, which that will end on the 2nd in November. Of course, we're going to have daily flights coming out of the Eastern Army Aviation Training Site in Euro Army Airfield, the second busiest health ward in the Army. So residents, we appreciate their patience with that. We have a, on the 18th of November, we're going to have a change of command for the garrison. Colonel Robert Hepner is going to become the J-3, which is the Chief of Domestic Operations for the Pennsylvania Guard, very proud of him.
By the way, he's a Mansfield graduate.
He's a Mansfield graduate, an alumnus with the Commissioner. So we're very proud of him, and taking garrison command is going to be Lieutenant Colonel Lane Marshall. He is a Lebanon resident, so he was our post operations officer and stepping up, a very fine, fine man, and we're really looking forward to him continuing on the great work Colonel Hepner has done with the Gap and continue to march into the future. This Saturday on the 5th of November, our federal neighbors, the Fort Innian Gap or Innian Gap National Cemetery is going to observe a program for Veterans Day. It's going to be at 2:00 P.M. We always assist them as our partners with parking. We're going to have designated parking on the gap itself for those people that want to attend the event. They're going to run a shuttle service, and they have a limited amount of handicap parking actually in the cemetery, so they will have a shuttle service to accommodate those that need to get over there. It's a big event, they're recommending seating over there gets kind of limited, so they recommend people bring lawn chairs if they're going to come. So we have that going on. Our archery deer season has been going well. We've harvested one hundred and thirty-seven deer already with archery equipment, which is good. We're hoping that will have an impact on our incidence of Lyme disease, deer strikes that we have, so we have that. One other thing, this past weekend, as we had the big storm that came through, there were recorded wind speeds at Euro Army Airfield of seventy-one miles per hour. I can tell you, living on the gap, I thought I was back in Virginia going through a hurricane. So we were very lucky, came through with a minimal amount of damage, got power restored immediately and up and functioning, and really got nobody seriously injured, so we were very lucky with that. Lastly, in one of my roles with Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce, I'm Chairman of the Military Affairs Committee, we are having a Lebanon resident, Mr. Bob Rockelhurst, he is a WWII pilot of some renown, at the Met Ed Center Auditorium they're going to have on the 16th of November, 8:30 to 9:30, have him come in and give a talk about his experiences in WWII. Very, very interesting man, so anybody that would like to, there's going to be advertisements for that, so just put an employee in for that. And handing any of you all's questions, that's all we have.
I'd just like to make sure I understood your opening statement correctly about field artillery going on this weekend, but I also heard field artillery ending 11/2, which is today.
This weekend, through this weekend, so it would be...
So through Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, through Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you for clearing that up.
No, I just wanted to make sure I understood it because others need to understand too.
Put it out. Thank you. Is Colonel Hepner going to remain on base?
Yes.
Okay, so right down the hill from his headquarters in the state Joint Emergency Operations. And you said the service is, is it the 4th or the 5th? You said Saturday, the 5th, but the 5th is Sunday, so is it Saturday or is it...
Saturday, yes.
Saturday, 4th?
Yes.
Okay.
Saturday, the 4th?
At 2:00.
At 2:00. Thanks, Nick. Thank you.
We have another Larry Minnick and Attorney Gallo.
Good morning. You want us to come up?
Sure, that'd be great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Would you just, for the sake of those in attendance, introduce yourselves and then you may proceed.
Hi, I'm Attorney Colleen Gallo, and with me I have Larry Minnick, who is one of the principals at Central Medical. And we're not here to talk about emergency services today. The nature of, the reason why we wanted to come and talk to the county commissioners is Central Medical received a complaint from the Attorney General's Office back in July, and its concern was that the complaint was driven by one of the county commissioners. And Central Medical felt that as a constituent of the county, that it would have been better served by one of the county commissioners who made the complaint to reach out to that particular facility at this point of the Central Medical to see if the dispute could have been resolved, because by putting a complaint into the Attorney General's Office, obviously they had to expend resources and monies to defend a claim, which again came to be meritless. So the purpose of our coming here today was to say, hey, if the county commissioner has an issue or receives a complaint from a constituent, that perhaps maybe instead of filing complaints, the Attorney General's Office perhaps pick up the phone and try to get it resolved that way. I know certainly Central Medical would have preferred to try to resolve it amicably instead of, you know, investing all these resources. So that's why we're here today, and I wanted to share that with you.
Just for the record, I was not the one that did that. Not Bill Ames?
No. Just for the record, I was not the one that filed that complaint either.
Okay.
And again, just so you know, the Attorney General's Office, when they send the complaint form, they identify who made the complaint, so that's how they knew. So again, we just would hope that in the future, if something like that comes again, that perhaps they reach out to the individual and efforts to resolve it instead of having, you know, a company or individual have to invest resources in these types of things.
Did you respond to this?
I hear you. However, I was the conduit for a complaint, it was not my complaint.
Well, it was though, because it was from you, signed by you, to the State Attorney General's Office, so in my mind, that would institute the fact that it actually was you that filed the complaint.
Again, I hear you. I had an elderly woman in her eighties who approached me, was not on the Internet, and needed assistance. I simply facilitated for a constituent, and I could not tell her how to think or what to do, I facilitated her complaint.
But the complaint had no factual information in it whatsoever, and so, and again, I don't want to speak to Colleen, but this is the file on this now, and everything that was in that complaint was addressed, but there wasn't one factual part of the complaint that we listed. So I guess my question would be, why would somebody in your position facilitate a complaint that had actually no facts that were accurate in it whatsoever? And there wasn't one fact, other than probably the lady's name and address, that was actual? And that was where Colleen was involved in?
Again, I facilitated a constituent, and the woman asked for some help, and I facilitated. I didn't think it was my place to tell her she was wrong, I had no idea, and passed it on.
Well, I think that's the problem. I think the no idea part is the problem. I mean, certainly Medicare and Medicaid billing is the only part of what we do, including our good friends here at First Aid, but, you know, the idea first is to respond to a call and to facilitate taking care of the patient, and billing is something that comes out of that secondary. But both First Aid and ourselves are governed by Medicare laws and rules and regulations that you're probably not aware of, but yet were listed in the complaint. And in fact, your resolution, if your resolution to, or solution to the problem, if would have been interacting, would have constituted Medicare for it. And so I think that, I think that before you go out to help someone, and I acknowledge that you do that as your role as Commissioner, but I think that there has to be a fair amount of due diligence and at least a couple of questions answered before such a letter would go out to such a high level editing as the Attorney General's Office.
Well, again, I hear you, and I respect that, and we'll certainly take that under advisement. I made a judgment to facilitate a woman who did not have the Internet that wanted to file a complaint, and in fact, I don't think the complaint was against you. And it turned out that the, there was, she thought she was being billed twice for the same service, and in fact, I learned through the Attorney General, when they called back, that there were two levels of care given, and you were the primary, you were there first, but then they needed a higher level of care, and the person who the complaint was filed against was then brought in, and they had a very legitimate billing, so I don't think the complaint was against you.
Actually, it was. We were asked to respond to a flagged complaint that was forwarded to the State Attorney General's Office by you.
I did forward it, I admit that.
So you're not suggesting, I just want to be clear, that she does not respond to a constituent, you're just suggesting it would have been a courtesy to you to call first and instead of going to, is that what you're...
Yeah, because I think if she would have contacted the appropriate entities involved, it may have been resolved without having to go to the level of filing an Attorney General complaint. And again, I'm sure First Aid may have had to utilize resources in responding to this as well, but I think it could have been resolved had a phone call been made to the entities involved instead of, again, wasting resources. That's our...
And taking that one step further, enough to belabor this, but unfortunately, there's getting to be more and more endless calls in Lebanon County. Tucci was a prime example, Mr. Dowd, I'm sure is aware. And when those things happen, you need to call in resources from other areas, including Lifeline, possibly South Central, or Northwest, Chaffers Town, Myers Town, all that area. The billing question that arose in this complaint will happen almost on a regular basis all the time, so why was one particular one, I know that this lady reached out to you, but there could be, if that's the case, hundreds of people reaching out to you, because Lifeline was in Lebanon County on at least two or three calls on Tuesday, and the same bill would be generated by Lifeline for the services that they provided. So are you going to file a complaint with the State Attorney General's Office about those bills when those people get them?
Again, my bigger concern is, I think it could have been resolved in a more appropriate manner as opposed to filing...
That's what I thought you were asking.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Bill.
I just have, I just have a concern. Certainly, I think all three of the county commissioners have very passionate concerns for our constituents, and understanding this as I do, I think it would be appropriate for any county commissioner to aid and assist one of our constituents in taking into account the fact that the person was in her eighties, et cetera. But I don't think it's appropriate for any of us to file a direct complaint with the Attorney General on the behalf of a constituent. It would have been far better advised to seek out someone or advise someone who could assist this person in, in fact, filing the complaint or resolving the complaint if necessary. So I feel that this reflects on the entire board, and so I'm not real comfortable with Commissioner Litz's actions in this case.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm Larry Minnick, I wear many hats, one of them is Mayor Cleona, and this is now carried over to Cleona Borough, and it's also carried over to South Endville Township. So it's progressed much further than a simple letter, if it is such a thing as a simple letter, to the State Attorney General's Office, so now it's a much, much bigger issue. But my question is, aren't the residents of Cleona, myself, or my wife Kathy Minnick, or Central Medical, aren't we constituents of the county as well?
That question's to you, Bill, I think. I think we are.
Absolutely, sure, and we are elected to represent all of the residents of Lebanon County, so I'm not in any way indicating that you should not be represented as well, and you should be treated fairly, and I feel in this case, you, you know, and from my seat at least, it doesn't appear that you were treated fairly.
I appreciate that.
You know, to have the weight, if you would, of an elected official with this complaint going to the Attorney General, I think that was not really a fair way to handle this. But certainly the person that had the complaint should have filed it, and if she's in her eighties and not capable, Commissioner Litz could have perhaps advised her to seek out someone or even helped her find someone to file the complaint, but certainly for Commissioner Litz to file the complaint and sign it, I think was out of line, that's just my position.
Well, I think that their position is that it should have been done at the local level first, and if unresolved, then go where you have to go, but at least give it the principles...
Absolutely, it's always better to solve things at the lowest level possible.
All right.
Thank you again for your time.
Glad you covered it, thank you. And two weeks ago, this is the last public comment, doing this on behalf of a constituent who came in at the end of our meeting two weeks ago, and he was not aware of the timing of our meeting and so on, so he just wanted to air out an issue that he had. He was going to come here this morning to apologize for if he offended anyone, and so on behalf of Kirk Goshert, I'm apologizing for if he offended anybody by his, maybe he considered an outburst that was mild, to me it was not, didn't rise to that level, but he could not be here this morning, and so I'm just, he was asking me to do that before it got too old. So that's what I'm doing on his behalf. Okay, we will now seek, anybody else for public comment? We'll seek an approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question or additions or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Bill, are you there?
I dare, I responded aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, missed it. That's it, we have the minutes, and now we go on to Mrs. Newland.
Good morning. We had receipts on 10/31 and 11/1, $2,909,503.42. Brings us to a total cash of $3,246,568.27. That expenditure was this week at $2,474,985.23. Our tax claim is $19,562.47, so that leaves us a balance of $752,020.57.
Seek a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So moved. I'm assuming that was an aye.
It would.
In support of the motion, okay. It's unanimously adopted.
I have two more resolutions here that need to be approved. First of all, we have an account for the Clarkson-Weckes, who are planning, and I need to change a sign on that account, so I need to have that approved.
So moved.
Second.
This is like LBR with a delay, I think. So let's see, we have a motion, a second to accept that new account.
No, this is to change a sign on the Clarkson-Weckes account.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Your voice carries. He's responding while you're still...
Talking.
Yeah, while your voice is still going the other way, and this doesn't come back this way, that's my guess, it sounds like.
Sounds complicated.
And I have a new account I do need to open for, 2017 bond issue, I need that approved. Tax code is Bolton.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve this new account. Any comment or question?
A comment, as you'll recall, the initial payment to Honeywell prior to the closing of the bond borrowing, the initial payment was made out of the capital account, so that is owed by this financing, so once this account's open, the bond is closed, the financing is closed, so that'll transfer, the 2.4 million will transfer over here immediately. Sally will take care of reimbursing the capital back, and I have another invoice from Honeywell that will pay that, so installment number two.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, ladies. Introduce yourselves, and you may proceed.
Shalley, Director of Human Resources.
Me, and check Human Resources Assistant.
Moving on to personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Deborah Spitler, Aging Care Supervisor 1, retirement effective December 23rd, with the last working day being December 22nd. Nicole Ridley, Law Clerk, resignation effective November 15th. Warren Evans, Telecommunicator, resignation effective November 3rd. Rebecca Bozeman, General Clerk C, resignation effective October 27th. Caitlin Dartis, Full-Time LPN, removal effective October 23rd. And Robert Doughty, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective October 27th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve those resignations. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Under F M L A, Leaves of Absence, Jesse Miller from EMA, up to an additional 65 days of unpaid leave of absence effective September 23rd. Christina Cold, M D A, Attorney's Office, 10 days of F M L A, 7 days unpaid, effective November 3rd, with a return date of November 14th. Karen Herzog from Renova, 8-week unpaid leave of absence, effective November 18th, with a return date of December 20th.
Make a motion to accept the leaves of absence as read?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers and promotions. Brandy Urban, Change of Status from Full-Time Medical Secretary at Renova to Full-Time Developmental Assistant at Renova, at rate of $12.63 per hour, effective November 6th. Joseph Christaback, Transfer from Jury Attendant in the Courts Department to Casual Part-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, at the rate of $12.72 per hour, effective November 20th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve those changes. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Moving on to other transactions. Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Christine Harris as an Admin Case Manager 2, at the rate of $1,336.15 by weekly, effective November 6th. Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Janet Ross as an Adult Abuse Investigator, at the rate of $1,336.15 by weekly, effective November 6th. Children in Youth would like to hire Robert Ambler as a Case Worker 1, at the rate of $1,156.21 by weekly, effective November 6th. President Judge Till Walk would like to hire Matthew Dobson as a Law Clerk, at the rate of $1,306.05 by weekly, effective November 13th. EMA would like to hire Christine Kennedy as a Fiscal Assistant, at the rate of $1,084.68 by weekly, effective November 6th. EMA would like to hire Taylor Ever as a Telecommunicator, at the rate of $15.32 per hour, effective December 4th. EMA would like to hire the following two telecommunicators, both at the rate of $15.32 per hour, both effective November 27th, and that is Bryson Looper and Jeremy Lewis. The Prison would like to hire the following two Full-Time Correctional Officers, at the rate of $13.98 per hour, both effective November 6th. Cheyenne Bojanet and Mark Heels. The Prison would also like to hire the following four Casual Part-Time Correctional Officers, at the rate of $12.36 per hour, all effective November 6th. Devonte Davis, Nicholas Hostetter, David Lehman, and Clint Son. And the Clerk of Courts would like to hire Leslie Stewart as a Part-Time Court Clerk, at the rate of $11.89 per hour, effective November 6th.
Make a motion to approve the hirings as read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, a motion to approve all the transactions previously read, plus the following. Michael DiPaolo, One-Time Longevity Payment Sergeant in the Justice Department, One-Time Payment of $2,117.16, effective November 9, and this is in the Court of Superior. Clark and Barton, right there.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Betsy. That's it, yours. Any comment or question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved.
For mandated conference seminars, John Fitzky and Jamie George from the Plenty Department would like to attend the Transportation Engineering and Safety Conference in State College, December 6 through the 8th, $530 total registration fee with lodging mileage, meal and parking reimbursement mandated by PNDOT. Chris Frye from Probation Services would like to attend Autism Spectrum Disorders Versus Paraphilia Disorders in Hershey, December 1st, meal reimbursement, six credits mandated by PDP. Samantha Vila, Emily Gimick, and Carissa Cantrell from Probation Services would like to attend the Adult Basic Training Academy in Elizabeth Town, March 12 through the 30th, meal reimbursement, 120 credits mandated by PDP. John Ryder, Heather Whitman, Sue Christner, and Sally Barry for Probation Services would like to attend the JCJC Conference Awards Dinner in Harrisburg, November 15th, $240 total registration fee, parking reimbursement mandated by JCJC. Brian Dejre, Nicholas Sedelnik, and Elizabeth Judd from Public Defender's Office would like to attend the Capital Cases Maximizing Opening Statements in Valley Forge, December 8th, $315 total registration fee with mileage and tolls reimbursement, that's mandated by P A Supreme Court.
So moved.
Make a motion to approve the mandated conferences as read?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those required conferences. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
The Requested Carol Davies and Melissa Martinez from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the P4A and PDA Quarterly Meeting in Hershey, December 5th and 6th, $80 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve those requested by AAA for non-mandated. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Laura Kreiser and Lisa Sawyer from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the P Utility Wise Training in Harrisburg, November 15th, with mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
with mileage, meals, parking and tolls reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we approve those Area Agency on Aging requests. Any questions? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So moved.
Daniel Roach, Emily Todd, Hirsch and Nicole Eisenhardt from District Attorney Detective Bureau would like to attend the 2017 Violet Crimes Behavioral Analysis Seminar in Hershey, November 7th through the 9th, and no other reimbursements.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we approve the DA's requests. Any questions or comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you. Morning. Morning.
Morning.
Phyllis, just introduce yourself in your station.
I am Phyllis Holter. I am the Administrator of Lebanon County Community Action Partnership. What I'm presenting is the Medical Assistance Transportation Program Grant Agreement for 2017 in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. And it needs one commissioner's signature. I'm also presenting, and I do have these checking fees each.
Should we take a motion on that one first?
You're gonna have to flip the other one, I understand.
The other one is the Participation Grant Agreement and Assurances of Compliancees, which need commissioner's signature.
Related to the-
Related to the Medical Assistance Transportation-
You can do that in one of those. Sure it's compliance, it's just part of the grant agreement.
There are currently-
Yeah, you can go ahead and do that. You're gonna talk statistics a little bit.
Do you want me to go ahead and-
Okay.
There are currently four thousand nineteen registered consumers in our Medical Assistance Transportation Program database. During the 2016-17 program year, we scheduled eighty-three thousand, fifty-one trips for consumers. However, seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighteen trips were taken due to cancellations in those shows. One thousand three hundred and seventy-six consumers were transported during 2016-17 at a cost of one million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four. We're currently utilizing thirty private drivers to transport as well as limited transit, central medical, first aid and safety patrol taxi monitoring persons to get our consumers to and from the medical departments. So we're doing a lot of business.
And that's an annual?
Yes.
So four thousand, eighty thousand trips, twenty trips per-
Yeah. Yeah. Scheduling out the office, so we are very busy.
You mentioned that there were 1.4 million in trips, dollars spent.
Yes.
The allocation is 1.3. It's an entitled program, so anytime it goes over, it just, the money comes.
It does, yeah.
Money flows. So it's not as though there's, you know, it's being subsidized or backfilled or anything by county money.
Correct.
One hundred percent funded.
Yes, it is.
It's a beautiful world. Would you like the motion now, Davey?
Yeah, sure.
Seek a motion, Bill?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we approve that contract. Any questions? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. So moved.
I didn't realize the crisis until I saw the schedule and I don't know what I'm looking at. Okay, this is a contract agreement between the County of Lebanon and Philhaven Behavioral Healthcare Services for our Crisis Intervention and Information Services. And it is a joint effort between Community Action Partnership, Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention, Children and Youth, and Drug and Alcohol. We fund it 100% through our grants, and I'm trying to find the budget.
It's three seconds.
The total budget is eight hundred and eight thousand, fifty-two dollars. But there are some kickbacks, so what the county-
To rephrase that, please.
The total budget is eight hundred and eight thousand, fifty-two dollars. But what the county is kicking in is four hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So that's the county's support?
That is correct. Yeah.
And that comes from-
It comes from Community Action. It comes from Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention, Drug and Alcohol, and Children and Youth.
So it's a portion of their funding that goes toward this.
So it's not actually from the general fund?
Whatever percentage of their funding is general fund.
Could be ten, twenty percent, something like that.
In some cases.
Community Action isn't part of the general fund.
No, but MHID gets some county support, which I don't know.
And Children and Youth.
Still a big number.
Could be like forty or eighty thousand out of that four hundred thousand.
Still a huge budget for crisis intervention. Okay. Do you see the motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we approve the crisis intervention grant, uh, contract, excuse me. Any questions or comments? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here to get approval for a 2018-
Just introduce yourself, assistant.
I'm Olivia Bingman with the Mosquito Borr Disease Program. I work through Penn State Extension.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm seeking approval for the 2018 Mosquito Borr Disease Control Grant. This grant is for the sum of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents.
Just a second. The one I provided to you-
Fifty-eight thousand, I was gonna ask that.
Five oh six.
I have copies.
There's, if you look at the items that are listed, for the Coordinator, it's twenty-eight thousand, four thirty-six. For the Tech, ten thousand, one seventeen. For a Sarah Cornelise, who is with Penn State, there's an Admin of eight hundred dollars. And then D, there were two versions floating around here this morning.
I'm sorry, confusion?
Olivia told me that it should be the other version. There's an item D, which is twelve hundred dollars for Admin that the county gets through all the swaggers efforts to admin manage the grant over at the Crawford Extension.
Yeah, the last page had the right amount and the first two pages had the wrong amount.
There's a lot more confusion than that as well, too.
This, the grant that I just handed you will be what, will be submitted online to DEP.
So the fifty-nine thousand dollars will be presented with full approval for 2018.
Seek a motion?
Make a motion to accept the grant as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we approve this control grant. Any further comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So moved.
I also, while Olivia's here, I also have a letter from Penn State requesting that you approve a change of principal investigator. I don't recall this being something you've done before, but nevertheless, Penn State College of Agricultural Sciences is asking for this. Evidently, the principal investigator previously was Leon Wrestler, who you all know as, you know, who is our face over at the Ag Extension. They reshuffled the deck, sort of, and now they're asking that you approve that change to Sarah Cornelise, who I think works out of the State College office, I believe. So they don't have any to sign. They just asked that you approve that and attached some information about Sarah. So I'll just simply give them a letter saying it was approved if you do so.
Right. Seek a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and that we approve the change of principal investigator. Any comment or question? Hearing none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. So moved.
Should we also talk about proposal?
Oh, the agreement from Penn State?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Along with the grant, we have a proposal submission from Penn State in order for the Extension Office, or myself, to continue doing the work. So again, there was no signature that is required here, so I guess we just need approval to allow Penn State to continue doing the work.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So moved.
Really up the red tape on this one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Olivia. Oh, Gordon.
You had intimated, Olivia, last time you were here, that there was a potential human case in West Isle, Bevel Township. Has that been concerned in your mind?
The human case was not in Bevel Township that I'm aware of. Human cases, let me explain this a little bit, is dealt with by the state. It's dealt with by DEP. The case that was in Lebanon County was found from a blood donation. So this person did not present with any symptoms, and there was no fatalities from this case. It was just known that someone in Lebanon County did, in fact, had the West Isle virus in their blood when they donated it.
I'm fairly certain that number one, Bevel Township, was mentioned when you talked about it. But besides that, so essentially what you're saying is that it was in the blood, there were no symptoms or no illnesses or anything like that. It's just one of those things that occurs.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Olivia.
Thank you.
Now, for some lighter. Enjoyable.
Good morning.
I'll bring this here. Good morning.
I'm Stephanie Dirk with Penn State Extension and the Client Relations Manager for Berks, Tester, Lancaster, Lebanon and Skoko County. So glad to be here today.
Do you want me just to mention why you're here, and then Jamie can take it from there?
Sure. In 2017, Penn State Extension Lebanon County is celebrating its 100th anniversary of extension services being provided here in Lebanon County. So the first agent, I believe, was at Youth and Family Services, or it was Newt and Agronomy. 4H was added in 2019, and the first office per se, in coordination with Farm Bureau, was in 1924. But it goes back to Penn State Extension, providing the Landbrink University mission of bringing the research that's done at the university out to the citizens of the Commonwealth through the extension service to help solve real application problems.
Do you have a proclamation to-
This will be acknowledged at the Farm City Banquet.
Yes, Penn State is the Lebanon Farm City Banquet, and the community there would like to acknowledge this proclamation at that time. I know it's Election Day, so I wasn't sure of your attendance. You'll be there. Okay, great. So we'll be happy to celebrate once again.
This is kind of a history lesson. Whereas Penn State Extension of Lebanon County is celebrating its 100th anniversary in 2017. Whereas the signing of the Smith-Leber Act took place on May 8, 1914, to establish a nationwide cooperative extension service. Whereas on March 27, 1917, approximately 150 people attended the first meeting of the Farm Bureau, which was held in Lebanon County Courthouse at Eighth and Cumberland Streets. The Farm Bureau was established to assist an extension representative in his work in Lebanon County, quote, "to aid in development of agriculture in all phases and to aid such allied industries as may properly come within his province." And whereas, over the years, many local agricultural leaders, their descendants and expected new generations will serve on the executive committee to provide influence and carry on the tradition of tireless and selfless service to our community. Whereas, beginning in 1924, the name and locations of the Farm Bureau changed many times. The location organization was now being referred to as the Lebanon County Agricultural Extension Association, which simply marked the distinction between the extension and the then-well-established National Farm Bureau Federation as separate entities. The name change is also recorded as Lebanon Agricultural Extension Service and Lebanon County Extension. In 1971, the name changed once again to Lebanon County Agricultural and Home Economic Extension Association to show inclusiveness and describe the broad scope of extension work. Within the last two years, the organization is now the Penn State Extension Lebanon County. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of our citizens, to hereby commemorate the 100th anniversary of Penn State Extension Lebanon County. Further, we continue to offer our support to the farming community as they continue to engage people, organizations and communities through programs to advance knowledge, economic well-being and quality of life within the County of Lebanon.
Seek a motion to approve that proclamation.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read.
I'll second the motion. Congratulations.
We have two firsts and a second, so any comments or questions? My only comment is how proud I am of the relationship that we have between the county and Penn State Extension. And agriculture, obviously, is the giant in the county as an industry. And all the things that Penn State brings to Lebanon County, it's very, you know, much appreciated and it's just a great relationship, so thank you.
It is a great partnership. Thank you very much.
And I will try and stop by.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same signs. So moved.
Thank you.
Do you want to carry it? Trust me with this till Monday? Yes, I'll keep an eye on it. All right, Stephanie. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. How are you? We're doing fine. Michael, while you're walking around, would you mind introducing yourself and maybe your folks, and you may proceed.
Thank you and good morning. Thanks for permitting us to address the board this morning. For those in the room who don't already know me, my name is Mike Ritter. I am the Chair of the Lebanon County Coalition and Homelessness. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I would like to have my fellow coalition members here today. We'll start with you.
My name is Johnson Rassley. I'm the Treasurer for the Homeless Coalition, and I am the Chip Coordinator for Lebanon County MHIDEI.
Hi, I'm Tabitha Kramer. I am from a program called Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Program.
Hi, I'm Patty Steinem from Lebanon County Housing Authority.
I'm Robert Oliver. I'm here for interest in learning more about the homelessness and hunger programs of Lebanon County.
Kate Hartman, resident of Lebanon County.
Karina Valente. I'm with Luther Care for Kids.
Thank you all for being here and for all you're doing on behalf of homelessness issues. If you want to proceed. Thank you.
Today, my colleagues and I are here to give a state of homelessness in our community, as well as our course of action forward to address this issue. It is difficult for us to accurately count the number of people locally who are struggling with homelessness. Indeed, the latest point-in-time count data we have, 2015, found two individuals living on the streets in Lebanon County. And 54 individuals were in a shelter of some kind on that particular evening when the count was completed. Given those numbers, most people would think we don't have a problem with homelessness, but we do. In fact, according to the Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Program, during the 15-16 school year, more than 250 children in our six school districts accessed homelessness intervention services. 250 unique individual children. And more than 700 people accessed at least one of our county shelters during 2016. So where are they? Why do we not always see these people out on the street? Because homelessness in Lebanon County does not look like it does in big cities. People who struggle with this issue are often found couch surfing, doubled up with friends or family, living in the family car, or yes, living in a temporary shelter. or family, living in the family car, or, yes, living in a temporary shelter. Homelessness is an old problem, but that does not mean it is an inevitable problem. At the Lebanon County Coalition to End Homelessness, our mission is to provide leadership in the prevention and eradication of homelessness in Lebanon County. To that end, I am proud to announce that as 2018 approaches, we will launch our three-year strategic plan titled Vision 2020. Still in the final draft stages, this plan will outline a series of strategies aimed at accomplishing four broad goals. Number one, a county-wide coordinated data entry system for community members struggling with or at risk for homelessness is developed and maintained. Two, housing options available throughout Lebanon County are understood in a comprehensive manner. Three, stereotypes, stigma, and discrimination associated with poverty and homelessness are broken down. And four, underserved community members are connected with useful means of transportation. Essentially, we seek to connect housing, employment, and transportation by creating a data profile of the county and also by engaging in ongoing year-round education and awareness activities. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is one such avenue we use to educate the public, draw attention to the problem of poverty, and build up the base of support in the community. The week of November 11 through 19, 2017, is packed with awareness and fundraising events. We sincerely thank the board for recognizing this week as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Beginning on Saturday, November 11, we will host a public reading of the children's book, Maddie's Fridge. Things kick off with a free breakfast at 8:00 a.m., and this will be located at the Lebanon YMCA Youth Center, which is in the upstairs part of the building. Monday, November 13, will be our It's Finito's Dine and Donate fundraiser. No voucher required. Just show up between 4:00 and 9:00 p.m., and when you pay at the door, say you are there for the fundraiser. Be sure to bring a friend with you. On Tuesday, November 14, we will host, in conjunction with HAC, an Archie Bunker Poverty Simulator from 6:00 to 7:30 at the HAC Multipurpose Room. This interactive role-play session helps deepen a participant's understanding of what it feels like to be oppressed. We will do another dine and donate fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse in Palmyra on Wednesday, November 15, beginning at 3:00 and running until 9:00 o'clock. This one will require a voucher, and that is going around now. This event will also include a balloon pop. For $5, you can purchase the balloon and pop it to see what prize you win. This year, prizes include gift cards, Sports Gear, golf course passes, Hershey Bears tickets, salon services, and jewelry donated by Leesel's Jewelry. Every balloon is a winner. You can also see us in the Holiday Parade, thanks to the young folks and staff at Youth for Christ, who will be designing and building our float. Finally, on Friday, November 17, we will recognize Red Shirt Day. Thanks to the United Way, members of our coalition will be sporting shirts like the one I'm wearing now in order to promote that we stand united against homelessness. At this time, then, we would like to present each commissioner with his or her own red shirt so that you too can stand united with us against homelessness on November 17. We thank you again for your time here today and your ongoing dedication to eradicating homelessness for our friends and neighbors.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments? I just, you know, I meant to mention with the Penn State Extension relationship with agriculture, how vital the volunteers are to all of that effort, and it's the same in your world, how vital volunteer support and to, you know, make us all aware of the hunger and the homelessness issues of our county. So, we thank all of you. It's always amazing to me how generous people are with their talents and their time. So, this is a very good example of that with your showing up here today. So, thank you. Thank you for the shirt.
Have they changed the date of the count? It used to be like in the middle of winter, the coldest day of the year or something.
Not as far as I'm aware.
Okay.
I know, it's still typically done.
Still in January.
Yeah. In the summer, they'd be out walking around. You could find them a lot easier. Okay.
Whereas, for the past several years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including, but not limited to, the shortage of stable housing in Lebanon County for residents with low income, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas, there are numerous local organizations within Lebanon County who are committed to sheltering and providing services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless. And whereas, Lebanon County Commissioners recognize that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Lebanon County. Whereas, the intended National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Lebanon County Coalition to End Homelessness. Therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, do hereby proclaim November 11 through the 19, 2017, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Lebanon County. Further, we encourage our citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens, as well as private, public, and nonprofit service entities.
Seek a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this proclamation for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And any comment or question regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same signs, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question. The 250 students that accessed, is that, how do they know? Is that through their guidance counselor?
I'll let Tabitha address that.
I can address that. So, that's under the McKinney-Vento law. So, students who are defined as being homeless are lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, and every school district has a homeless liaison, and that's who's capturing those students who are experiencing homelessness.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you all for being here and wish you good fortune in future projects. You bet. Bill, would you like two shirts? Just kidding.
He has one large one.
Yes. How's it here? Let me see if the other one's sitting. I'll see if the other one's.
Good morning, I'm Bob Dad, Director of Lebanon County Emergency Management.
Good morning, Joe Morales, Deputy.
Jeff Yocum, Coroner.
We have two items today. First being to accept the hazardous materials response fund grant, which we applied for a little over this year, some $17,546.75. Also worth noting that that's the highest amount we've ever received due to the work of Hazmat.
Tell you what, he just keeps on showering us with good things from his efforts. We need a motion, Bill.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to approve the 1718 hazardous material response fund grant. Any questions or comment regarding that?
Just comment that one of the pages that outlines what the item's being, what the grant's being utilized for, which are mostly meters and calibrations for the prepared equipment.
Hazmat response.
If there's nothing else, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same signs, so moved.
Next item we have, we are applying for a countywide Narcan distribution grant. We've also like become the county coordinating entity to manage that grant. We're going to defer to Deputy Morales to tell you more about that.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the Naloxone to First Responders Program. The Naloxone for First Responders Program is coming to us through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, PCCD, in collaboration with the Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, Pennsylvania Department of Health, and the Physician General. And what it is, is a $5 million program over a two-year period where they will distribute kits over the entire, throughout the entire Commonwealth, all 67 counties. Now, Naloxone is a medication that has been proven to reverse the effects of opioids on the brain and respiratory system to prevent death. Since November of 2014, there have been more than 3,800 overdose reversals in Pennsylvania as a result of Naloxone administration by law enforcement alone. The kits will be provided directly to one centralized coordinating entity, or the CCE, per county. No funds will be released. PCCD will serve as the purchasing agent and ship the kits directly to Lima as, once we're designated as the CCE. And then, of course, Lima will distribute to our first responders throughout the county. The anticipated start date for the program is November 15 of 2017, and then run through November 14 of 2019. We're currently scheduled, Lebanon County would receive 15 cases for the first six months, equalling 360 doses. The number of kits was determined by a formula that included variables such as population, opioid overdose deaths, overdose deaths, and overdose reversals of using Naloxone. And comparatively with the counties around us, we're right in line with the number of kits that they'll be receiving. Lima was required to get a prescription from Dr. Yocum, which we received, which is part of the application process. What will happen is, for future distribution amounts, that'll be determined based on the use and saturation levels in Lebanon County. And what will happen is, these kits will be distributed biannually over the next two-year period. Lima, as the CCE, will be responsible for determining community needs and distribution of the Naloxone. And there's a long list, just about everybody is...
Semiannually or biannually?
And there's a long list of first responders that are eligible, whether it goes through schools, to library personnel. We can pretty much push it out to a large amount of folks. Lima, as the CCE, will be required to report the number of kits provided and to whom, the total number of doses of Naloxone administered, the number of individuals Naloxone has administered, and the number of Naloxone administrations resulting in overdose reversal. So, that will be our responsibility at the county level, which we, as a CCE, will take care of. And so, what we're here today to ask the Commissioners is for your approval to be the centralized coordinating entity of CCE for Lebanon County so we can administer these kits.
Yes, I do have a question. Joe, before I make a motion, which it sounds wonderful, but I do have a question or two. EMA is obviously locked down as a unit. You are obviously in charge, but do we further have security for the storage of these 360 kits, number one? And number two, must it be refrigerated?
Yeah. I do not have the answer to the refrigeration.
How about the lock?
We would be able to secure those.
Yeah, we have a safe that we can secure it in, but from a storage requirement standpoint, I don't believe there are.
No refrigeration?
No.
Okay. Okay, then I'll make a motion to proceed.
I'll second that motion.
I've moved and seconded that we apply for this designation. Any questions beyond what we've had? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same signs, so moved.
And then, that second actually allows you to apply for the grant.
Okay. Bill, would you make a motion for applying for the grant, or is that...
Yes, I'll make a motion to apply for the grant.
The CCE is the designating of us as...
Oh, so first we designated you. We're doing two separate motions. Okay, I thought it was all in one. I'll second the motion then.
Okay, this is the grand side of it. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same signs, so ordered. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your good work.
I think it's really based on research. We have some sense of...
We have a very sad-looking Dodger fan here, so please...
There's all kinds of good things that interest you.
There's Dodger blue there.
Next one will be a little bit too. A little bit.
Yeah, how about that? That incredible. Bill, we're just waiting for Warden Carnes.
Okay, he's not there.
Well, he's...
Two hundred.
He's coming.
Oh, yeah, he's on his way in.
Signing autographs or something.
He wants to make his brand after him.
Good morning, Mr. Ames.
Is this gentleman here with you on this issue?
Yes. Jeff.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
All right, let's enlighten us. First, introduce yourselves, and then we'll go from there.
Warden Bob Carnes in the center. To my left is Jeff Temple. He's the pharmacy manager for Donald Pharmacy, obviously, you know, our county coroner, as well as the prison physician, Dr. Jeffrey Yocum.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm coming before you Commissioners today to, based upon previous meetings, but also to enter into contract with Donald Pharmacy regarding medication dispensing, as well as medication purchasing through Donald Pharmacy, a local carrier. And the reason I'm coming before you is because they're offering to lease what they consider call a Prado machine, which is a medication dispensing machine, which will be individually packed medication for all the inmates at the correctional facility on a daily basis. The reason we feel it necessary to enter into this contract is it'll reduce liability for the county, reduce the margin of error for hand dispensing that is taking place right from the nurses, from our nursing department, our medical department, and also free up nursing hours that are being dispensed to the inmates. So, the nurses can actually spend more time dispensing nursing care instead of dispensing medication by hand to the inmate population. As far as specifically how the Prado machine works and the medical, it's not new technology. The technology is present in a lot of hospitals. Jeff can speak to his company as far as how they use it and where those locations are. But after review of the contract that Prado, that, excuse me, Donald is presenting, and based upon our solicitor's review, he's recommending that we go into contract with Donald, it would be an asset to the county and also improved medical care at the correctional facility. Again, this is Jeff Temple, and if you would have any questions, Jeff, you can give a backdrop to actually what the Prado machine and the medical dispensing process is.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, the Prado machine actually houses over 200 medications inside the machine. It takes all the information from a pharmacy software, and it individually packages everyone's medication based on instance in which you would take a medication, so morning, evening, dinner, bedtime. And what it does is, it actually writes, it picks and packs every medication from the machine, puts them in these pouches, and seals them. These are tamper-proof pouches, so they cannot be closed once they've been opened, so it's very obvious that something's been touched. Has every patient... Has every patient's name, the date and time in which they would take the medication, the listed medication, its size, shape, color, and imprint, as well as the prescribing doctor is all printed on the outside. This will all come directly from Dono Pharmacy. We have the machine ready. We've been using Prada for several years with one of my other pharmacies down in Philadelphia. They actually show for facilities and things, it actually improves medication compliance by over 30%.
I think it's incredible, yeah.
Yeah.
And inventory issues too.
Oh, absolutely. Accountability issues.
Correct. So the, and speaking to that part, of course, all information will get put in by the pharmacy staff, whether it be a certified technician or pharmacist, probably going to be a pharmacist entering all the information. The machine picks and packs it, it then gets checked again by a pharmacist, they get a seal approval, we have stickers that says, yes, this has been, you know, checked by a pharmacist, and then it would go out for delivery to the facility. So this actually gets several sets of eyes on it before it'll actually ever reach the doors of LCCF. So we're very warm and fuzzy that it works. We've been using, as I said, we've been using a machine like this for several years with other nursing homes and facilities and such, and it is fantastic. It is the latest and greatest out of the pharmacy world.
Are you able to give any comment on the scale of, I mean, how much per day, average daily dispensing?
Average daily dispensing, we dispense about 235 different types of medication a day.
So this is a huge impact.
This is a huge impact, and that encompasses just daily medications to encompass mental health medications as well. So Dono, actually, what I was most impressed with was not just the Prada. We actually originally approached Dono for reduction to the county in cost of medication. And when Jeff brought it to our attention, the doctor and I met with Jeff, and he brought the savings, the possible savings is, you know, on an average, between 20 and 30,000 in medication costs, as far as we were buying from Farm America in bulk.
Is it per month, per year?
Well, that's annual.
Annual.
Annual. Now, and that's, that depends on the profile, again, of the inmate population. It depends on the need, the medical need of the inmate population, so, and that's more of a guesstimate than an accurate number, but based upon his prices per units as they're packed, and Farm America's Dono is far the better deal for the county. So we're hoping that the medication savings that we present as a result of signing this contract will offset the monthly leasing fee.
Well, and just the offset of the labor that's being attributed to this.
Nurses today are, not to interrupt you commissioner, but nurses today are spending four to five and a half hours just pouring medication, and we usually need two to three nurses to do that. So that's four, you know, four to five and a half hours a day that nurses are tied up dispensing medication when they can be delivering services elsewhere.
I hear and acknowledge all these wonderful things that can be an outcome from this program, you know, from nurses having more time to you helping with the billing, and the list goes on. But I do have one or two questions. The contract, I looked through it again this morning, and I hear you say the cost savings, but I had, it said I should refer to Schedule D. I have no attachments for schedules to show pricing.
We can provide you with the attachments.
Okay. I would appreciate that. And then, the second part is, is this a state contract? Do we have to bid it, or what is the?
No, we don't. It's not a state contract.
It's not a state contract. Do we have to bid it though?
No, we don't have to bid it. Not medication services.
Okay.
Because technically, we can still, even though we're using Dono Pharmacy, the contract we're going into is primarily for the use of the Prada machine. I can still go outside, and if in fact we get medication elsewhere at a cheaper price, we're still not legally bound by not purchasing that medication, if you understand what I'm saying.
I do. And then, I guess then the follow-up question is, do we have other local pharmacies that have that same machine? I mean, are we going to? Is the answer no? Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
You are.
Since we're having some discussion, could I give?
Well, I'm just trying to, you're cutting back on the cost of nurses and the work that they are doing. How are the inmates actually getting the drugs? I mean, it's like.
Well, the nurses will actually hand it out instead of actually dispensing it, you know. This is, this is something, when I say dispensing, I mean they're actually pouring the medication, putting it on a medication sheet, and then taking it to an area where they actually hand it out to the inmates. What it does is it cuts down all that dispensing time, you know, as opposed to the handout time to the inmates.
So the nurses won't be counting bills?
Correct.
The meds won't be loose?
That's correct.
They will just be the point A or point B, and I guess verify that the inmate, the proper inmate gets it and takes it.
It's my recommendation, even though I understand that cost and cost savings is an issue for the county as far as the county taxpayer, I think the potential liabilities, you know, that we can address here from a legal standpoint, I mean, this machine cuts down the rate of error to virtually nothing. And I think you can't really put a price from a liability standpoint on that, especially in the medical community today, where we live in a litigious society, and I'm not dealing with the individuals that are most willing to accept a mistake. So at the end of the day, we want to make sure that, number one, that we're dispensing the best medical care that we can, the most efficiently, and I think this, number one, protects the county from those liabilities.
If you would see how it's being done now, the liability of errors, I mean, they're hand-pouring these medications, I mean, it's a huge liability compared to what we're going to have.
And just for, not only that, as the doctor speaks to that, because of, it's the way of the world right now because of the nursing shortage everywhere, hospitals, et cetera, we're not getting nurses to apply at the facility. So if we're contracting, I already contracted with hands-on nursing, so, you know, we're paying for nursing services right now to come into the jail in addition to our county nurses, and this would allow them as well to provide the nursing care that we need. And I think this, we're headed in the right direction by contracting.
Bill, I just can't tell you how thrilled I am that this is finally coming, you know, to this moment with your help, Jeff, Dr. Yocum, and how, we just came through our budget hearings last week, and it's so refreshing to have the creativity and you guys looking for new ways to be more efficient and safer and all those good things that we look for in our department. So I really appreciate your commitment to the time, and the gratitude from the county is without question, so thank you. Yes.
Could you explain to me the difference between the five and the seven days? I was confused reading the contract. One place it talks about seven days' delivery, and the other place it says five days' delivery. Or is that like when you're in-house, you're not in-house five days? I didn't quite understand the difference.
I agree with that. What we're going to do, the way we talk about how we're going to dispense the medications is, we are open Monday through Saturday, but what we'd like to do is have the medications, I will deliver, let's say, Tuesday's medication on Monday, so everything's going to be one day ahead of time. But come Friday, I will deliver Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So it's a five-day delivery, but we're covering all seven days.
Is it broken down by days then?
It is.
And then, if there's any medication left over, because do you normally stay and dispense it?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay, so if there's leftover medication, does that go back to you?
That can come back to me. I'm actually one of the only facilities in the county that can do a drug take-back. I do have the clearance with DEA to properly dispose of medications, but the beauty of the system is there shouldn't be any extra medication. I'm only dispensing exactly where the doctor is.
But I do know if there were times that someone didn't take it because they were ill or somewhere on the way for some reason?
Well, the medication's dispensed by our nursing staff and our correctional staff on the block. So, I mean, inmates have a right to refuse medication.
Yeah.
And if they do refuse it, it'll go right back to Dono Pharmacy.
I just have a question.
Or if an inmate is released, that medication will go back.
Okay.
Because it can't be used again because of the labeling on the packages that has the date and the time it should be dispensed, if that's not the case, that's the problem.
So there will be no stockpiling of anything left over?
No. No. Thank you.
I just, I had to ask.
That's the problem we have now. Stockpiling medication and.
Bill, any questions?
No, it sounds wonderful. I've been convinced for quite a while that we're making a good move here.
Okay, we'll seek a motion then.
So moved.
I make a motion that we accept the contract pending our solicitor's final approval.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any further discussion? James?
Somewhat related to what you were just asking, but so no more inventory at our facility? You'll be turning that back or whatever. And maybe a follow-up ties into that. You have 200 in the inventory of the Prada machine, roughly. Inevitably, somebody will need something that's unusual or specialized that's not in there. What happens then? Is that kept on-site, or is that still?
I can still add it. There is a manual entry feed into the machine that I can add anything that's not already prehoused inside it. So if I need to add vitamins or a medication that's not already in there, I can manually what they call drop it into the machine.
Okay.
Just to let you know, these are local people, so if we have immediate needs on Saturday, and they comes in on Saturday.
Read my notes.
They can deliver that medication Saturday night, Sunday morning, whatever, so, I mean, we have instant access, whereas our last people that we used, it was several days until we would receive medication.
Or somebody comes through and take that you didn't have, and suddenly they need your, you know.
Right. So their immediate response, because they're local people, they live here, and they have access to their pharmacy point wherever it's at.
I live local, the pharmacist lives local. Easy.
Thank you.
Other question?
Yes.
The medicine that you have now in inventory, is there going to be a final inventory list kept as far as what's going to be turned back or destroyed or whatever?
Yeah, so we're required, we're required to do that. Anything that we remove, you know, and we'll actually network with Jeff on that, but anything that we remove or anything that's going to be destroyed has to be, number one, archived, and we have to also list what we archive, list what we're going to keep, list what we're going to get rid of, and when we're getting rid of it.
Will you use some of those meds that are left in the packaging, or no?
Yeah, we actually talked about that a little bit there. We could actually incorporate that into our first runs, if you will, of the Prada packaging. As I say, we did just talk about leaving some medications at the facility, already prepackaged, so if an inmate comes in that needs ibuprofen or something, it'll be there to be dispensed.
Something non-archived.
Correct. You know, so antibiotic or, you know, ibuprofen, Motrin, generic, you know, run-of-the-mill things that maybe need to be dispensed. We can actually have them listed, and they will be numbered, and those actually need a tracking spreadsheet as well for all of our meds.
Okay. On favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We have a new system, and we appreciate your work very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Those are, yeah. Those are effective.
Thank you, Warden. We had a good trip Monday.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yocum.
Just two more items for me. You ready?
Yes, sir.
First, we have the assessment office, I have two exemption requests for disabled veterans exempt from property tax. The first is Batista Arroyo Jr., 8th Avenue, Lebanon, approved as meeting all the requirements for a disabled veteran, as well as David Barclay, a resource man in this town.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, then we approve those two property exemptions for veterans, disabled veterans. Any question or comment? Are there none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
And we have a application for county liquid fuel aid for 2017. They intend to use their allocation for general road maintenance, and is $3,099.
I make a motion to approve the liquid fuel disbursement as indicated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Are there none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
And I will be going to settle this afternoon to East Wyman Street that first seen behind H.I.D., so.
Thank you.
And I just have a note from Renova Center that they had a deficiency-free building inspection by the, for Medicaid recertification from the Department of Health and Human Services, so that was a big.
Life safety, that's a good point.
Yep, very good. Okay.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Good. Seek a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
We're all in eighty-two.
You bet. See ya.